Everybody the council reconvened from closed session, Mr. City Attorney, any announcements?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor. City Council, I would like to report one action we took.
Angela, will you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? Well, now to proclamations and presentations, family court awareness month. We have a representative. Tina's here. Tina has her hand raised on the screen. Can you allow her?
Hi, thank you.
Welcome. You can turn your screen on, be great.
It does not give me that option.
Okay. Well, welcome. Did you have a presentation?
I think we're presenting a presentation.
Oh, we have a, we have a proclamation for you.
One. Here I am, hello.
Well, thank you so much, Tina. We do have a City of Coachella, California proclamation for you, and I'm going to read a couple of the wheres, then I'll allow you to say a few words. It says, whereas the mission of the Family Court Awareness Month Committee is to increase awareness of the importance of a family court system to prioritize child safety and acts in the best interest of children. And whereas the mission of the F C A M C is to increase awareness on the importance of using scientifically valid, evidence-based treatment programs and services that are proven in terms of safety, effectiveness, and therapeutic value. And whereas the mission of this F C A M C is to educate judges and other family court professionals on evidence-based, peer-reviewed research. Such research is a critical component to making decisions that are truly in the best interest of children. I encourage all residents to support their local, their local community's efforts to prevent the harm of children in the hands of family members and honor the values of the lives of children. Now therefore, I, Stephen A Hernandez, and the City Council of the City of Coachella, by the powers vested in us, do hereby recognize Family Court Awareness Month, and I, we encourage all residents to support their local community's efforts to prevent and all the harm of children in the hands of family members and to honor the values and value the lives of children. So Tina, welcome. I don't know if you want to say a few words, and we will send this proclamation to you.
I, I would love that. Thank you. Um, I am the founder of Family Court Awareness Month and our, the foundation of our work is rooted in domestic abuse. Domestic violence is about power and control, and the abuser's need for control does not dissipate when the relationship comes to an end. And for many of us, we realize that the abuse actually And for many of us, we realize that the abuse actually escalates. And the abuser knows that the children are the way to maintain power and control, and the family court system becomes the new platform of abuse. And we truly do have a crisis on our hands. It's called family court. We need community support for survivors of domestic violence. Protecting one's children in family court is a scary and isolating journey. And it's our goal to plant seeds and start these important conversations so that our community members and our elected officials are educated on what's happening in the family court system and can better support these brave survivors. Um, in the past three years, we've had over three hundred cities, counties, and states proclaim November as Family Court Awareness Month, and we are thrilled to have Coachella join that list. So thank you for linking arms with us in awareness. Um, it is the first step towards change.
Tina, can you, how do you pronounce your last name?
Sweden.
Sweden. Well, we have, Ms. Sweden, we thank you for being here. And council, I don't know if anybody wanted to say a few words or just thank you.
Tina, thank you for all that you do for children and for families and to help provide support for those who want to come forward. It is very challenging and very difficult. Um, it isn't easy, and people kind of return to abuse because it's all they know, and it's, it's unfortunate, but it's what they're comfortable with, even though it's a very unhealthy and unsafe situation. So I want to thank you for all you do, and I want to thank you for standing up for, for Kiddles and, and um, making sure that it gets to where it needs to be. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you for being here. And with that, we'll move on to cash assistance program quarterly update. Uh, Gabriel.
I think that we have a representative for MAF.
Yes. Hi. Good evening, everyone. Give me one second as I join as a panelist here, so. Right. I am. Could be set up now.
Joanna, welcome.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Thank you very much for having me today. Just want to go ahead and confirm really quickly. Can you all see my screen? You should see a Coachella Immigrant Families Recovery Program slide.
Yes, we can see it.
Wonderful. Thank you very much for confirming. Um, well, good evening, everyone. My name is Joanna Cortez Higmanes. I'm the advocacy and engagement director at MAF. I'm really excited to be uh, here today and join you all once again to, to share a quick update on the Coachella Immigrant Families Recovery Program. Um, to kick us off, I want to go ahead and just remind us a little bit about the context for how the program got started off, or better yet, why the program got started off in the first place. So MAF, together with the City of Coachella, and decided to partner to ensure that the immigrant families within y'all's communities had access to resources to begin rebuilding their financial lives as a result of the aftermath of the COVID nineteen pandemic. And so through this program, we're providing monthly cash assistance to a hundred and forty low-income immigrant families within the City of Coachella. But in addition to that, we're also providing financial services to these families. And the focus here is really two immigrant families have been excluded from any federal um, relief as a result of COVID, um, and even excluded from the expanded child tax credit. So just a little bit of a friendly reminder of background on the reasons why and the parameters of the program itself. But to kind of just walk through some of the latest updates here. Um, in terms of enrollment, so as you all may have heard from the last couple of city council presentations, we did receive an overwhelming amount of, of applications of families who were interested in participating within the program. To be more specific, we received three hundred and ninety total applications. And we ended up um, having a hundred and forty of those submitted fully, approved, and enrolled. So that means that currently uh, we have a hundred and forty low-income immigrant families who reside in the City of Coachella that are actively participating within the program. And now, one of the components of the program is length of participation. So in order to better serve the residents of the City of Coachella, we're also trying to understand uh, through this program, how long will it take for immigrant families to recover? And um, as such, we've decided to randomize selection into a twelve-month and a twenty-four-month cohort so that we can assess the timing of the program and how that factor influences future policies around guarantee, uh, around providing monthly cash assistance to um, families that have been excluded. And so up here on the screen, you'll see um, the breakdown by participation length. So we have sixty-eight families who are on the twelve-month track and seventy-two families who are on the twenty-four-month track of the program. Yes.
Sorry, you're, you're, I don't know if you're uh, going through the slides, but we're still on the very first one.
Oh, I'm sorry. Let's see what's going on there. All right. I just. Let me see if this changes anything. Does that work?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. I appreciate you pointing that out. Feel free to let me know if that happens again. Um, but this is the enrollment slide that we were just talking about in terms of the applications received, submitted, and enrolled. Um, and the slide that we were on just now that I was talking about is the length of participation. So um, up here on the screen, you'll be able to see the breakdown of the number of families that are within the twelve-month versus the twenty-four-month track of the program. And again, um, this was um, completely randomized, and this factor will allow us to assess how timing of the program um, uh, influences the recovery of um, of families' financial lives, and will hopefully also help influence future policies that are taken into consideration. All right, um, to just move on here. Additionally, what I want to go ahead and share in this and some of the subsequent slides is a little bit of um, background on the uh, demographics of applications that we received for the program. So on here, we'll focus on household income first, from the folks who submitted an application from the a hundred and forty families who submitted an application. What you'll see here is that more than seventy percent of these families have a monthly household income that is greater than two thousand dollars. And what you'll see in this next slide is, I think, there we go, is household size. Um, in terms of, again, looking at the hundred and forty families who submitted an application, seventy-seven percent of these families um, have a household size between three to five individuals. And so it's really taking the percentages here um, in the middle across three and five. And when it comes to the number of children in the household, what we've seen from these one hundred and forty families, again, submitted applications and are enrolled into the program, is that thirty-five percent of them had at least two minors in the household. With even uh, twenty-one percent having three, fifteen percent having four, and four percent having five. Moving on to the funds that have been committed and dispersed for the program as of the end of September of twenty twenty-three, as shown in our last quarterly report to the City of Coachella, we have dispersed slightly over four hundred thousand dollars to families who are enrolled, and we are committed to disperse an additional uh, six hundred and six thousand eight hundred dollars as part of the program. I also want to talk a little bit about dispersment methods. So one of the um, components of this program is obviously the cat, the monthly cash assistance, and we did provide families two options for receiving this monthly cash assistance. They could choose from either receiving it in a physical, uh, reliable physical prepaid card or um, via direct deposit to their checking account. So on screen here, you'll see the breakdown of the dispersed methods that these families chose, with fifty-six percent choosing to receive their monthly cash assistance via prepaid card and forty-four percent deciding to use it via a direct deposit. And as a reminder, when it comes to the monthly cash assistance, um, a core part of the program is believing that families are the experts of their own lives and that they know best what they need. And so there are no restrictions to how these families can use a monthly cash assistance that they're receiving, regardless if it's via direct deposit or a prepaid card. Now, as we look ahead, and as was mentioned early on, and times again, we are not just providing monthly cash assistance, but we're also providing timely and actionable financial services as part of the program in helping families to rebuild their financial lives. So we continue to just be committed to providing one-on-one financial coaching to families, as well as group financial education workshops. And even uh, continuing to promote other MAF resources like MyMAF app, which has a kind of tools to help folks create personalized action plans as they work towards their financial recovery. So while our enrollment in the program has ended, um, and as we are actively providing monthly cash assistance, our engagement with clients uh, goes well past that, right? We are also reaching out to them to engage uh, in financial services. Now, the um, the research of um, IFRP at the national level that MAF is doing is evolving and ongoing. Um, therefore, its learnings continue to evolve. Our program and what we set out to do with the City of Coachella is really rooted in the lived experiences of immigrants, and we hope to be able to offer valuable insights that can shape conversations that we're having at various levels around policies uh, that can better support immigrant families, especially those that have been excluded from um, federal relief. And so in the months ahead, what MAF uh, intends to do is to continue just listening and uplifting the financial recovery stories of IFRP clients so that we can be better equipped to influence policy conversations and advocate for programs that do just that, that better support immigrant families. And up here on screen is just a uh, quick quote from Anel, who is a current Coachella IFRP client um, who shares that he's using the money to be able to pay down his uh, credit card debt as well as purchase food for his family on a monthly basis. So uh, this really just goes to, as far as to show that we are continuing to engage with families not only by inviting them to participate in our financial services, but also reaching out to them to just hear about their experiences and lives in hopes of really again uplifting those stories and those financial recovery strategies to influence broader conversations that we're having. Uh, with that, I'd like to just close out and say thank you very much. And if there are any questions, I'm happy to, to take some of those.
I have one question, Joanna, on uh, the financial services that we're offering, that you all are offering. Do you have any statistics on those? Have all of the participants participated in at least three of those, or what's going on? And are we tracking that?
Yeah, really good question. So one thing to note is that the financial services are by no means mandatory, right? We are not, um, we are not telling families that they have to participate in order to continue on in the program, although we are highly encouraging them to participate. And so when I say highly encouraging, it's sending them monthly newsletters with a calendar of the um, latest financial, group financial education workshops that we're hosting on any given month. And so, for example, um, this month, we had a workshop on the importance of establishing credits. We had another workshop on um, how to define your debt reduction strategies. So these workshops, along with descriptions, are put together in a newsletter that we send out to families to really encourage them to participate. In terms of what we're seeing, um, as far as participation goes, we're not seeing that all one hundred and forty families are partaking in financial services, but we are seeing that there is a, a good percentage of them that are, I would say roughly about twenty or so percent of the families are either engaging with us on the one-on-one financial coaching or group financial education front. And that's something that we're continuing to keep up off on as well, right? And that we're able to track on our end from our Zoom registration, which is connected with our group financial education workshops, but also on um, our own um, booking site for one-on-one financial coaching equipment.
Well, maybe that's something we ought to consider as a council, since we're what, maybe forty percent into this program? Uh, then we make it mandatory that the folks participate in these programs, at least, at least two or three of sessions. Because the idea was always that, you know, we were going to provide this assistance, but we also wanted to show them for lack of a better analogy, how to fish for themselves. And uh, and that was what we were, we sold, that's what we got sold, that said, hey, this is going to be good. But if you have some participants that are just taking the assistance and then not uh, doing some, some effort to kind of educate itself financially. I think that's something we should really consider. We can probably amend our contract. And then maybe Selena, we can look at that. And then just uh, making sure that, that we, we provide folks with the tools. And they take advantage of them.
I, I, I don't know if I'm supportive of changing the contract halfway through, but um, but I think you're drawing a great presentation, but I do agree with the spirit of the ask, right? Uh, maybe at the next presentation, um, we could have more numbers. Um, because a lot of the initial, like, initial information was presented at the last quarterly meeting, like, how many people applied and all that, we, we, we've already been informed. So I think in these quarterly reports, it'd be great to have uh, uh, you know, uh, one, something that was new today was how much money we dispersed um, and all that. I think in, in the, in the next report, maybe like more, you know, data regarding the financial literacy, um, financial coaching, uh, participation. Um, I know that, you know, it, it, it would be a toll on, on both uh, the you know, the, the service that's being provided by MAF and the participants. If we then make it mandatory, but I, I, I do agree with the spirit of it. So um, anyway, then we can be supportive. And maybe you can work with our staff in making, in encouraging more uh, families to participate. Um, I encourage that, and I invite that. So uh, you know, let me know how I can be of any support.
I'll just, I'll just mention and give an example of uh, of a program we did recently here in the city where uh, we had a, a a leadership academy or, or a citizens academy. And we had a more applications than, than spots available. And then part of that was they were going to get a little, uh, what did we give them, Selena, like four hundred bucks or?
A stipend.
Two fifty? We gave them a stipend of two fifty. And then, and of the ten classes we gave them, I think they were required to attend nine? Or it was like eight or eight, eight of nine, or eight to ten. And we had a hundred and ten, like a hundred percent participation. And everybody showed up. Why? Because there was people willing to take their spots if they didn't. And, and, and while we understand that, that we're not trying to be uh, I'm not trying to be punitive here, but we do want to make sure here that the intent of our, our assistance is to, the long goal, the long is, is to help people learn how to fish for themselves. And, and that's what we started here. And so to get, like, I'd like to see more information on the participation of the literacy classes, because when we participated in this, that's how we sold it to the community, that this is going to be financial assistance. But then this was also going to be literacy classes, where people are going to learn how to, how to be financially competent and literate. And if people are not attending those classes, I want to know why. And uh, and, and so, and there needs to be a hook. If you're getting every month, what is it, four hundred bucks? You know, or whatever that number is. And, and so, and, and if they're online and everything else. So, so and, and I only bring that up because we are reviewing right now. We're in the process of reviewing all of the, uh, of the dollars and, and reallocating some monies to different programs uh, from uh, the, the, the assistance that we got from the federal government. So so it is kind of like that time right now where everybody's, we're reviewing and seeing, is everything working as intended to? So we can get more data, be great.
Joanna. Hmm. Sorry, go ahead, go ahead.
No, go ahead. I don't want to cut you off.
Um, how much are they receiving a month?
Four hundred dollars.
And?
And how much was originally allocated for this program?
Currently, what we have out or what the city of um Coachella has allocated for the program is. Um, one point zero zero eight million dollars.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and to just address the comments around financial services, uh, definitely we'll make sure that I take that back to our team. In terms of the type of information that y'all would be most interested in seeing for the next quarterly report. As well as the, our next participation in these uh quarterly events. And um, we're tracking participation in financial services. I don't think that will be, it'll be too hard for us to just pull some of that information. Or data to uh share with you all. When it comes to um, how can we encourage more families to participate in our financial services? Would certainly be open to having a deeper conversation with y'all's team to explore how we can do that. And in partnership together, right? I I think, you know, I've mentioned the strategies that um our team is using on the comms front. In terms of sending out these newsletters and also making sure that we are promoting them any opportunity we get where a family is calling us. To ask the question about uh the monthly cash assistance or their length of participation in the program. But I think it could bolster our efforts to encourage higher participation. If we also make sure that um even just local organizations within the all communities, we're also plugging in some of these programming. So would be definitely be open to just talking more on how we can partner on that front.
Yeah, I also wanna reiterate, when we passed this months ago. We were, we understood, we we, when we, we understood that financial coaching was gonna be part of it. But we also understood that the one million dollars was gonna be directly to the pockets of the people benefiting from this. And so the additional support, w- w- we're, we're, we weren't paying for with the, with the one million dollars. It was part of the partnership with Mission Asset Fund. And in those discussions, we never said, you know, let's make it mandatory. Um, and so the idea that halfway through it, we can open to the conversation whether or not we're gonna continue it, I think it's not. A good approach uh in general, uh, because that 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 was, that should have been part of the conversation when we first approved this project. Um, and and that's the understanding that came, that that came with when we did this. But I think because of the spirit of the suggestion, um, we could definitely work with Joanna and seeing how we can support them. And creating more uh avenues of communication to these families. Uh, or uh, or in any way to make sure that these families are benefiting from the financial coaching assistance that is being provided. By Mission Asset Fund without using a a penny from the one million dollars.
So just very quickly, um. So I wasn't on council when this was, I think, originally put together. So that's why I'm asking questions about, you know, trying to get a little bit more background info. Um, and I understand, you know, both uh mayor and and mayor pro tem on, you know. Whether we should or we shouldn't kind of, you know, in the middle of all of this, make it a requirement. I think the way I see it is um. Not so much about making it mandatory. It's not, I don't wanna see that as something negative. I think originally it would have been really good to make it part of um. You know, this contract, this and and just to let the families know, like, hey, there's this, you know, these courses that you can take. Or you can join over Zoom and learn a little bit more about financial literacy. And I think that's important only because um, we want our community to, to do better. I think at the end of the day, how do we tell them it's not a negative thing? Like, look at this as a positive thing. I want you to grow. I want you to pass on this knowledge that you're gaining to your children and then generations after you. I think if we can change that a little bit and not make it sound, you know, like it, it's not a negative thing. This is a good thing. You know, it's, it's something good. You're gonna, you're gonna learn, like, well, go along with you. Let's teach you. Let's talk about this. Um, I think that's a better way to kind of take a look at it. It's, it's not. We're not trying to give you more, we're not trying to give you homework or make this transactional, right? Like, I give you this, you give me that. It's not that, it's, I want you to be better. Like, I wanna help you. I wanna um teach you, I wanna help educate you so that we can all just thrive and be a better community. Like, that's how I see it. It's, it's not so much of like, let's just throw out some requirement for them and give them a little bit more homework. It's not that, it's how can we all do better as a community? So I would personally like to see it and I would love to see more families participating. Um, hopefully the information is available to them in in Spanish too, and that they can join via Zoom. And that they can, you know, pick up a conversation and and ask questions and feel comfortable. And that we, we say it how it is, that we tell them the way that it it is. It's why are we requiring this? It's because we want you to do better. We want you to thrive. We want you to learn with us too. Um, so that's what I would like to see, Joanna. I don't know if the council would agree, but I think it would be really good for our community. If we say we care, and that's why we're up here, if we say we care about them, then we're gonna, we're gonna work with them. And we're gonna make sure that, you know, that we're educating them, just like we all love to learn. Let's ensure that, you know, they're, they're learning with us too.
Yeah, absolutely. And I think that framing is uh very important, as you've mentioned it and called out. And um, I do wanna say that, you know, that is the framing that we are using in the touch point that we have with uh Coachella families. Who are currently participating in the program. It's about creating that open and safe space for them to access shit they want. And it's really centering those spaces like our uh group events, but also financial coaching. As um opportunities for for families to practice those, their self-agency. And um really self-select for themselves if they want to participate and feel like they can benefit from that information. So I, again, I'm open to, and I'm sure our team is open as well, to just having further conversations around how we may be able to work together. To just highlight this message around financial services. And um hopefully garner just more participation um in in that programming with families a part of this program.
There are no other questions, we'll move on. No other questions. Thank you, Joanna.
Thank you.
We'll move on and now to uh item number nine, senior center code of conduct. Never thought we'd get here. But seniors centers growing.
Mayor and council, this items before you, um, as a request from you from during our last meeting. The code of conduct um was identified and created about two thousand nineteen. We were having a couple of challenges with some of our seniors around that time with regards to um just um. Some very demeaning language and also cer- certain behavioral things that were causing. Um, some unsafe feelings for for other seniors and other patrons of the center. So we looked at other senior center code of conducts and we really kind of mirrored a lot of what other centers had. Um, we tried to keep it to ten, to keep it kind of basic. Um, this is also around the time that we did the expansion of the center. So it was a time that we evaluated this, um, the, there's ten roles essentially. Um, that the age of those that are patrons of the senior center itself need to be of, of a senior age, fifty-five and older. Um, kind of limiting what people are bringing into um to the center, to making sure that we can maintain a safe space. Um, obviously not permitting illegal drugs, things of that kind, not sharing um people's prescribed medications. Um, again, the language, um, making sure that it is appropriate and courteous, um, proper attire. Uh, no sleeping, lying down, moving furniture that blocks walkways. Um, no unreasonable use of the restroom, laundering or other um types of of bathing are prohibited. Um, the facility also prohibits the condition that. Um, unreasonably interferes with the staff or other patrons' safety, such as harassing, threatening facility staff users or staff. Um, things of that nature. There, there's a few other items, offensive body odor, things that basically cause impacts to others. Using the center. So um. And seniors that are not um independent do require that their caregiver attend the center with them. Um, as the center is for for seniors, but we are not caregivers for for those that are um in attendance. So those are the basic codes of conduct. In circumstances where these are um not adhered to. Um, the approach that staff takes is that we give a verbal and then we give a written. And um after that, then we do do a suspension. So in circumstances where people have been suspended, it's been six months. And if then they could return to the center and they continue to break the code of conduct, then they are given a verbal again. Then they're given a written again, and then they're given another suspension. And the second suspension is for a year. And then the third suspension would be permanent. In reviewing what other centers do. They um are a little bit more uh direct with the permanent suspension. We actually take almost nine steps basically to get there, right? So you get a verbal or written and then a suspension for six months, a re- a verbal or written a suspension for a year. A verbal or written, and then it would be a permanent suspension. Other um senior centers give um a warning that um is a suspension in itself. For about a week, a month, and it's permanent. So they give two or three, some centers actually give you one. Um, and then the second is a permanent sus- um, permanent suspension. So it varies. Um, when we did, they all are very different. Um, and in some circumstances, obviously, I think in all circumstances, depending on the gravity, if it was really severe, it would be immediate suspension. We have not had that circumstance. Most of our circumstances have to do with um behavior challenges that are causing. Other seniors and other patrons to experience a bad um experience at our center. They're causing um foul language, bad behavior that is causing anxiety for other patrons.
Council, any comments?
How many people have been recommended in terms of, do we have the numbers of how many people have been suspended for a year? And how many people have been suspended for?
For the six-month period, we have had two, and for the year, we have had two in the last, uh, since two thousand nineteen.
Two for forever and two?
No, none for forever. Two for six months and two for a year.
Oh, good. Those all happened this year.
No, only two happened this year. Uh, one six-month happened this year and one one-year happened this year.
So I think uh. So this is the area that we wanted to kind of have a little conversation on the, on the amount or how big the suspension is. And uh. And what's fair, that, you know, six months is half a year. For some of the seniors, this is only, and there's been warnings, by the way, for others. But I do understand that, but uh, six months is a long time for some of the seniors or elderly, et cetera. Even a year suspension was a long time too, but I'm just wondering if if, if maybe we could do three months and then. Maybe a six-month and then a year, uh, maybe give them like a, like a kind of a three-year warning here. Yeah.
And then permanent?
And then permanent, but I'm open to council suggestions. Uh, I only bring this up just cause it, it has occurred and I know folks have gotten warned a lot more this year. And then when they're given a warning about their behavior, are they taken in privately? Cause I told them.
Yeah, I'll reaffirm that with staff, but generally they're pulled aside, they're spoken to. Um, when they're given a written, that's usually in the office, in staff's office.
And the written, it goes over like, hey, this is what's going on.
It's a letter that's kind of broke down, that breaks down, um, you know, the behavior that is causing the concern.
How about we um, uh, we meet at the senior committee that Frank and I sit on, Dr. Bureau and I sit on. And then give a recommendation to council. Schedule a meeting or, yeah, and then uh, in that committee, I think we could take more time and chatting with the, you know, learning from the senior center staff. And seeing what, you know, on both ends, I think, you know, agree with the mayor here, you know, anything we can do to minimize these suspensions and. And the duration of suspension, six months to years, like, you know, I get all crazy when my iPhone lost five, five minutes, you know.
The main challenge is I wanna make sure that we're also being, well, we wanna be sensitive and allow them to return. That that was kind of why we created ours is significantly more.
Yeah, it's a lot of steps.
Than um other centers. But at the same time, if you let them return permanently too quickly, then you have that constant conflict, right? That's been created there, so that, there's that balance.
Yeah, that and, but on the other side though, the. I've noticed that at least the people that have been suspended, I don't know if that's the right word, but they uh. You know, there's, there's a huge amount of like. Like uh, like shame they feel, because everybody knows they've been suspended. And uh, and it, and, and so, and then at the same time, like, you know, they get lonely. You know, they get very, you know, and and it's at the end stage of, you know. Someone's lying for it, I mean, but it it's just, it's just one of those things where we gotta. You know, it's like, I'm trying to be sensitive here. I understand what you're asking, because other, others, folks have a right to deserve.
And those that were also recently suspended were suspended from Indio's center, so.
And you know, we're in some, uh, problem, and, and uh, some of my thought is, is, is uh. It sounds like, you know, we're, we're looking at it in just a punitive way, but are we doing anything to provide counseling? You know, cause if it's a person that is obviously like, you know, multiple times, you know, six months and a year, but they obviously give some sort of. And there's also like, yeah, and if you're lonely, maybe the person that's been suspended, you know, maybe there's a commitment to. Do X amount of hours of of counseling. We have like, you know, commission down the street uh or or look at other services. But looking how we can provide those services to the, to that senior center, bringing it up for us to put some budget item into it. Because, you know, that's, that's, you know, that's the other approach to it, like the school districts. Uh, there's been a lot of state laws, we're removing both defiance suspensions. And there being, there's also state laws at the same time in encourage, uh, encouraging uh restorative justice practices at the school sites. Ensuring that, you know, there's gonna be an approach that, you know, that that we talk about what happened and, you know, and and there's some, you know, mental health. Uh, pro- providers at schools and so uh, thinking that, taking that type of approach won't be a bad thing. You know, obviously, maybe we can discuss that as well as the senior committee. But um, if we're just looking at a punitive without providing a service to these, to these individuals that obviously are feeling lonely or feeling isolated. Are are causing a problem to some people at the senior center multiple times. You know, I, so maybe they don't know they're doing that, right? Cause they're, they're at the, at the end of their, of their time, you know. So unfortunately, you know, I've, I've gone to senior center, you know, for the last few years and, and 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 it's true, like, you know, they're. What the mayor said, a lot of them, it's the end of the key, the, the end of their, 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 their life. And you know, we've, you know, I, I've met a few people in there that are no longer with us. And it's very unfortunate, you know, so. Yeah.
We can take this to the subcommittee and bring it back.
Yeah, sounds good.
I, I agree. Whatever recommendations they can come up with in programs that can be um partnered with. I do just want to just, um, I'm sure when there's a warning given, depending on the severity of it, that there's probably. You know, usually even to a warning, it's, it's avoided at all costs. Like, you don't, you know, you don't go straight into a warning. So usually even that behavior, it's kind of repeated before warning comes forward. Unless it's severe, then obviously you need to go straight to a warning. When it comes to some of the other seniors, I mean, we can't really control what they share, you know, and if they're sharing what's happening. I, I don't think it's coming from the staff at the senior center. They're extremely professional and I think very respectful. Um, you know, we can't control um what the other seniors say. I think it's just, you know, reminding everybody to be respectful. And, you know, something like that. But I look forward to what the subcommittee um brings forward.
We, we need, can you make, I know we meet with um the senior center liaisons, but you know, can we, maybe they can also. Kind of bring some, some of their viewpoints to the meeting, so that way we can kind of have a, like I said, dialogue for the meeting. That way it's not kind of.
Give them, uh, we meet once a month, so I'll give them a heads up before our subcommittee. Thank you.
The, the good thing is our senior center is very healthy. That keeps growing.
It does.
A lot of people will keep going.
Marita, is this posted at the senior center?
It is in Spanish and English, and we remind the seniors at every event, we have a, at an event at least once a month. And staff verbally reminds everybody of those code of conducts at those times.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you, Marita. With that, move on to written communications.
There are none.
Move on to consent calendars, recommended that the consent items be applicable continuously. What are the wishes of the city council?
Make a motion to approve.
There's a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
There's a second, all those in favor, senior publicist and I? Any abstentions, any? Any extensions, any no's? See none, motion carried, we'll move on to add number twenty five, new business. This is a consideration of conditional approval for equipment lease purchase with respect to acquisition, Marita. This might have been a continuance too.
Continuing item number twenty four.
I think it's this is Danny Kim's item number, you're you're first.
It's not for twenty five.
Yeah, we're on twenty five now.
We're on twenty five.
This is, uh, yes, correct, getting came from our offices should be on the line. And we joined, this is a uh follow up from the last council meeting on moving a condition on one of the resolutions and uh. Danny has his hand raised, we can have a speak on that.
Mister Kim, welcome.
Hi, can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
Yes. Great. Good evening, uh honorable mayor and council members. Uh, so um at the last city council meeting. The council approved the Bank of America financing for the Alliance Building Solutions Multi-Site Energy Improvement Project. And uh but the council put a condition on that financing, uh the council um. Requested that if the financing were to move forward, that it would be in its entirety. Uh one of the discussion item at that council meeting was potentially uh excluding the. Process optimization uh component of the wastewater system uh project. Uh because the staff wanted to kind of study that some more to make sure that uh we're doing all the proper um. Uh improvements to the wastewater treatment plant. Um the staff has. Uh discussed more with the outside consultants and um. Given that we do have a very attractive interest rate from Bank of America for all of the components excluding that portion, the process optimization. Um, we wanted to bring this back to the council to request that that particular condition that was imposed. On the approval at the last council meeting be removed um so that we can move forward. With uh the all the lighting and HVAC and solar um panel improvements. Uh and study the process optimization component some more and come back to the council. With a definitive project and an alternative financing for that uh piece.
The 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 recommendation is to 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 remove, right?
Just to remove that condition that was imposed at the last council meeting.
Give give us that staff recommendation too, correct? Uh I'll I'll make a motion to approve the recommendation to remove the. Uh condition on resolution financing.
Looks like motion carries for a lot or motion fails for lack of a second. Is there a subsequent motion? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and.
We, if you guys not approve this, the total part.
Like we have, yeah.
Yeah, so.
Well, the condition was, if if we don't approve it, goes back to what the condition was when we approved it last year, which was that there's no project.
Staff recommend moving forward with phase one, which is the solar panels, the streetlights, the carports, charging stations. Uh, we will visit the the sewer optimization in the phase two perhaps maybe, but. Right now, staff will recommend doing the phase one with the Bank of America rate. And that uh and we will need to remove that condition that council put in place uh during the last meeting.
So it would be done in two phases rather than everything all at once.
Right. It's because the sanitary district has a lot of debt right now and one of the debts come off in two years.
Hmm.
So we felt staff felt more comfortable uh bringing back maybe a phase two in two years when that debt comes off.
Gabe, can you go over really quickly again the numbers for this specifically? We don't have to go into details, just the numbers.
Kim, do uh Danny, do you have those numbers?
Well, the uh the total uh project now without the um. Uh without the prop- process optimization piece will be around eleven million dollars. Or ten million dollars. Um when you say the exact numbers, are you looking for the total amount of that we're we're borrowing?
Yes.
Okay, hold on one second, let me pull that up. Sorry, I'm searching through my emails here.
We don't need an exact, just an estimate.
Right, the so the the process optimization piece was around, I believe, seven million of the fifteen, so. We're looking at somewhere in the eight million dollar range for everything. Uh there's in in the staff report, you'll see the total project list. Or summary, um let me get to that page here. I'm sorry, okay, yeah, so the total project amount now is seven point one five seven million dollars. It's uh if you look at in your agenda packet, it's page one sixty seven, that's the total project amount.
Thank you.
Yeah, and and really, it's because we have such an attractive rate uh in place for these. Uh other very energy saving projects that'll benefit the city that uh staff really would like to. Move forward with these projects while it continues to look at the process optimization piece. And all of and Alliance understands this and and they would like to move forward with uh with. The project excluding the process optimization um and Bank of America is ready to close um as well, so. It it's, I mean, based on current uh interest rate environment, if the city were to go back out. It would be paying uh probably around fifty basis points higher, and so I think this is a great opportunity to. Go ahead with the project that we know for sure um will generate energy savings and then study the other component. Um further.
Danny, what's the payback period here on this on this?
It's it's a twenty year lease uh arrangement.
And my my, look, I I know where I'm at on this issue. Uh and and I'll be honest, I'm not going to support this item simply because of the fact that when we look at the. Projects, we looked at it in its entirety and I and I'm afraid that we lose the economy of scale and. And it may be advantageous for us to look at this in two years when the sewer uh district does. Pay down its debt and is able to kind of look at a project in its entirety. Um, I'm afraid that if we, even though we got, you know, Danny working on the financing at four point three, whatever the rate that you got. Uh and I think you you do a great job, you've done a great job for us. I think I just think that if we piecemeal things, it's gonna, it's gonna take away from that overall economy scale. I also believe that if we really look, we probably could find different dollars and grants, et cetera, that may be available. That weren't necessarily available when we initially started this project in its entirety. Um, so I I'm going to be a no, but again, the counselor is a motion, there's a second, we can go from there, my my simple. My simple uh approach here is that that when we started. Or my reasoning is that when we started this, it was it's in its entirety and then the. Uh, the company has basically said and others, well, we can't do sewer anymore, it doesn't really work. For financing and for whatever reasons, and that makes me very suspect because it was, you know, what else could go wrong and that's where I'm at, so. Also, it's your prerogative as well.
What staff is recommending, based on the debt that the water, no, based on the debt that we have. That's what the recommendation is, is it would be better to do it in two phases.
Correct, and at phase one would be funded by the general fund, it's seven point one million, and we're looking at twenty, twenty point seven million dollars worth of savings. With the streetlights and the sporting lights and the the so solar panels that we're adding and all the energy efficiencies that we're adding to each of our city buildings. But those are the items that the public will see, along with the downtown lighting that we want to install. Um, and then with the sewer optimization, we can uh scope that a little bit better and see what the other finances is out there, maybe longer. Thirty year or something, but uh you know, staff would like to move forward with the seven point one million dollar project. Phase one, and Danny indicated Alliance is on board with it, Bank of America is on board with it, and uh the legal team is on board with it.
Okay, I'm gonna second the motion then.
The motion and second, give it a roll call, please.
Also, member Delgado?
Yes.
Council member Figueroa?
Epstein.
Council member Vigar?
Yes.
Yes.
Mayor Hernandez?
No. Move forward now to item number twenty six, uh. This is approve conceptual design and appropriate a million dollars to the civic center pandemic retrofit project.
Get it, Mayor. Uh, this item was discussed at the last meeting, was asked to drop back. Um for for this discussion and to decide whether or not to proceed with this item. This item um was presented as one of the projects uh for ARPA money, um probably about a year and a half ago at this point. We did do some, so this is uh the six hundred thousand dollar project right in the middle, this is regarding that project. Some evaluation was done at the civic center to re- um to redo the layout of what is currently the hearing room at the civic center. To accommodate a council chambers if the council would like to proceed with that. Um essentially, the layout would be flipped, so the dais with the um on the opposite side of the room, you would enter at the very top. Um of the the diagram here, and it would sit the entire council, as well as the city manager, city attorney, city clerk and city treasurer. Um and it would accommodate, sorry, I have this on my next slide, and this is just a uh depiction of what the visual would look like. For the upgraded facility, it would include improvements obviously to the aesthetics of the room, but primarily also to um. To the camera equipment and the technology in the room, it would include automated voting, it would include an improvement and an upgrade to the camera system significantly. Currently, our capacity in this room is ninety, I believe that's standing. Um, the capacity in the civic center for the layout that you saw is a hundred and eighty seated. And it would, um, the camera equipment in this room currently is a standard definition camera equipment. Um, the upgraded would be high definition. Uh, this building is not seismic. Um, one of the reasons that we staff does not recommend really making very many more improvements to this facility. Um, and we have had a significant increase in requests for meeting spaces in the downtown. If this room um were not used for council meetings and planning commission meetings and all of our commission meetings, it would allow itself for some additional. Uh meeting spaces for the city as well as for nonprofits um that use our nonprofit hub here in the downtown. That um really is kind of the summary of of the project. If the council would prefer to continue having council meetings here, uh we would still recommend potentially looking at upgrading. Installing upgraded equipment at the civic center, we don't have camera equipment there and it would provide redundancy um for another facility. So should anything happen, um we would have another location that we would be able to broadcast meetings from. The other option that was identified in the staff report was also, um if council does not support um the first two options essentially. It would be to um remove all ARPA funding for this project and to relocate it to the workforce development. Or the old Central Park site. And with that, that does conclude my presentation. I'm happy to answer questions.
Uh, staff listened to council on the la- our last uh ARPA fund presentation and we, you know, we heard that uh, you know, that we want to repurpose some of those funds. Back to workforce development and to look at the old Central Park site. Uh, you know, uh we want to be respectful of uh council's uh direction, we understood when we did the the first ARPA study, it was a different council and different priorities. Now the priorities have shifted, so we want to be respectful of that. Staff would be okay with alternate one, just, you know, installing camera systems at the civic center. Uh, I think it's nice to have two alternate, two sites with zoom capability or something, that one of these cameras go down, I can't replace them, they don't, they don't make them anymore. Uh, so we would have no zoom capability and there would be no other option, we would just go back to the the old way of doing council meetings. So it's nice to have a second setup, just in case something like that happens or there's an emergency in downtown that we can't uh get to. Uh, you know, this the street floods a lot, so they're in storms, we won't be able to have meetings here. Uh, so we would recommend the alternate one if council wishes to reprogram the remaining funds back into those other priorities.
Um, it's uh interesting to really listen to what staff heard from the council and. I'll open that up to the dais and see what folks want to do.
It's a police safety alert nine one one outage east Riverside County from Cabs on the Black.
So, uh, council, what is your prerogative? I uh. What I heard last meeting, it was to scratch this project and to allocate the dollars to economic development and to. Uh, Central Park, but it sounds like the proposal here is to. And by the way, when it last week or last meeting, it was six hundred thousand dollars for the remodel of. The civic center facility, and now the project's gone up to a million dollars. So it's a scope creep already of four hundred K and I imagine by the time it's done, it could be one point two K, well, one point two million, so that. Also.
What the changes in um in the funding, the increase?
Uh, when we, when we priced it out, last time it was, you know, uh during the pandemic, a lot prices went out, you know, when we did the, the consulting gave us their. Cost breakdown that came out that that high, so the would have been six hundred thousand from ARPA funds and probably four hundred thousand from uh general fund.
I I think for me, um, I'm not completely opposed to this, but I'd like to see, I like to see like a like. On our upper funds, like at a holistic approach, instead of seeing it like individual based, you know, because if I see this alone versus other needs, obviously. You know, there's always going to be more needs, and so um I see the intent, I just think that presenting it alone. Without the other recommendations were that were being seen, that way we see the remainder of ARPA fund that is remaining. Um, so today, uh, I don't feel comfortable voting for it or or against it. Um. Uh, obviously, like if someone makes a motion, we'll take a vote, but um but I'd rather table it um to, so that it's part of a a bigger conversation regarding. The remaining ARPA monies that we have.
So there's two options then, is that what we're looking at? It's to install equipment over there and make sure that we have.
It's it's a few options. Number one is the one that we presented, that will to move forward with the one million dollar project with six hundred thousand ARPA funds. Uh, convert alternative, number one is to just approve the camera system at civic center. Or number three is to scratch the whole project and reallocate uh the funds per the council's recommendations during the last week, last meetings, uh ARPA discussions.
You know, the the issue that I'm I'm struggling with is. What's our overall game plan? And I've heard conversations from staff and council members and myself too, anyone, you know, that. That uh maybe we should build a new city hall uh and. And then I've also heard others in the past that say, hey, uh, you know, the current civic center facility would be a great. Public safety facility because we do pay an enormous amount of lease to the thermal facility at the county. And maybe we don't have to pay that, but we create our own public safety facility. I've heard from nonprofits that that say, hey, we need more space and this space. Well, it's not good enough for us to use, we certainly have nonprofits that are using it and uh have a lot of earthquake retrofit issues, but. For the government, it's not good, but the nonprofits, okay, you can use it. Uh, so I'm struggling with that, with like, where do we want to go while we grow up? And if the ideas, you kind of just throw money and like, hey, we don't like, like, hey, you know. The city hall or this hall that's been used since, what do we build? The city hall or this hall that's been used since, when do we build this nineteen forty six? Oh, you're on that time, it's a longer meeting or needs. And what's the goal? What's our long term vision here for us? And throwing money at something just because it's available. I'm not sure that's the right way to look at this and. Maybe we need to take a step back and look at a piece of like a facility kind of plan. And like, what do we want to do when we grow up and where do we want to be? And that's, that's kind of what I'm like, I I would suggest if we take a little time. To create a facility plan, and there's nothing wrong with that. That way we have a clear picture of what the next ten, twenty years look like. We're just throwing money here and there at a problem to me. It's not the right way to go. And um, so I I'm. I'm I'm an option number three, scrap the deal. Let's look at a facility plan. And then really approach this in a way that makes sense for all of us for a long term picture here.
Gabriel, um. So. So what happens when you guys need more office space? Because what I'm hearing over there is that you're. You're breaking down walls and putting up new office spaces. And so if this is built, then where are you going to grow?
We have, we install cubicles at the corporate yard, so there's no cubicles out there and then there's still options at the corporate yard.
But for how long?
I think for the next five to eight years will be fine.
About eight years. My concern is that if we use up that much space is where are we growing from there, you know, what? How much is it going to cost us if we need a new facility, you know, to expand on? And putting a million dollars towards renovating the civic center and putting it there. You know, I do agree with the mayor that we do need options and better planning as to what. You guys are planning for when it comes to growth. And it's not just staffing, it's also the, you know. Quantity of services, you know, all this stuff needs to be taken into consideration. It's all going to grow. It's a reality and it's shifting and it's changing. And so that that all be taken into consideration. But I I did make it a point the last time too is that. I am uncomfortable with so much money being invested in it from ARPA money. I am from ARPA money. But that doesn't mean that I'm opposed to. You know, getting a new city hall. I think it's, we need one, you know, obviously, I mean, you know, I look at our city hall here and it's like. Three rows of chairs, you know, we get to the executive team in the back, you know, that's, that's all we have. I think without a doubt is that we need to. We need a new facility. But I do want to consider the financing, how we're going to get there. Um, and what we're going to do with this facility. As well, because I know that we've been trying to build something here. Um, and it just hasn't come um to fruition. It just hasn't been, we haven't been awarded some of these grants. But then I also know that the city hall here has also brought on some challenges because. You know, if we are awarded some stuff, then then we're going to have to move and so I do. I do agree that we do need to put more consideration into planning and taking um population growth, taking. Um, services growth, taking staff growth. Um, and what new type of facilities we're going to need as well.
I agree with the pro team though. I want to see where, you know, the holistical view of. The funding source. Oh, you know what? Where you can, you know, puzzle and plug and play. Realistically, where that would make more sense instead of. Allocating one bucket. As you know. It's kind of where I stand and viewpoint on that.
And then um the two hundred thousand dollars, Gabriel, that um. For the. I don't know if they're, I don't know if they're referred to as doors in the fire station that's being renovated. Or that's being, and so is that, is that needed? Is that a requirement?
The the fire department has requested that and they're getting pricing for for us right now, but tho- those were one of the recommendations for the reallocation of ARPA funds.
It is. So and but but that wasn't considered before, so that's.
No, that's new, but council didn't make any comments on that, so. We heard uh Central Park and workforce development.
And so I do want to hear from from fires to, you know, what the needs are and if it's a, if it's something that we have to move forward with because if we do, then. We're now subtracting an additional two hundred thousand.
Yeah.
To what, you know, some of the suggestions have already been made. And so that does change it a bit as well.
No, it would, I think that could be tied into a full ARPA conversation again. Not this item, I I think with this item. I'm hearing that there is no support to allocate this hundred K. I'm also hearing that we should table this item. Uh, and then go to a full. ARPA discussion and then kind of handle it all. That way.
I recommend.
I'm going to make a motion to table this item. Uh, and that. And that we have a cool ARPA discussion. Uh, in its entirety to allocate the remaining ARPA money.
I'll second the motion.
There's a motion, there's a second, can we get a roll call?
Council member Delgado?
Yes.
Council member Figueroa?
Yes.
Council member Vigar?
Yeah.
Mayor Proton Galata?
Yes.
Mayor Hernandez.
I move on to a public hearing. There is the public comments, public address, city council board corporation. So anyone in the public would like to address us, welcome, how are you?
I'm fine.
I saw a deal of my pills in your hair now. Welcome back.
I'm David Catanzarite, I'm the executive artistic director of the Green Room Theater Company. Um, and I want to let you know that I'm going to be contacting each of you. I I want to ask your help. We have a lot of money that we want to spend about three hundred thousand dollars. We want to spend the bulk of it on the people of Coachella, so i- if you can help me to make that happen. We would greatly appreciate it.
We need the cameras here. Pardon? They're going to stop laws of covering your camera.
But we have had unprecedented success in fundraising and Ms. Delgado, I spoke to you. Couple of months ago about workforce development, which is part of the way that we see our mission.
Yeah.
And we have received, we are the only theater company in the in the uh Riverside County. That received a workforce development grant for creative, creative artists. We have to spend eighty percent of it on artists and we're going to create about twelve twenty jobs. They won't be. Permanent, but they'll be for artists and they will pay a respectable amount of money for the artists who are engaged. We're doing a piece. Uh, we're going to create an original piece about section fourteen. You probably have all have some passing uh knowledge of. And we want to create a bigger piece than just the argument that's going on right now. Uh, we want to talk about development in the entire Coachella Valley. At least we want to expand to talk about how. The Coachella Valley has expanded in the in the last century. Um, so we're centering it around section fourteen at this time. Um, but we're. Moving outward from that, um, we're going to, how it's it's what's called a devised piece, which means that. Designers, directors, playwright, actors, um, producers. All the people who are are involved with it are going to be part of the uh creation of the piece, which is. Different from the usual model where you get a script and then you produce it. Um, so we, we're moving on that. We've also got some other great stuff coming up, which I'll talk about individually. Um, but I do, I also want to mention we're. We are moving our as much business here as we can. We just spent uh invested a thousand, hundred thousand dollars in mechanics bank and moved it from Wells Fargo. In Palm Desert, um, and that's our our reserve fund. And now we're looking to uh for, we, we don't want a theater. We want rehear- performance space, rehearsal space. And storage space, and we want to move our storage space from Devon Storage in Thousand Palms. And if there's help, if you give us some help finding a good uh business that we can work with here. Um, so those are some of the things that we're into. Uh, I will mention that we. Are the only company in this region that brings professional theater and ballet. To people in the neighborhoods where they live, that's our mission. Uh, supposed to asking people to come to us. Um, we try to take it where they are. And it's been, we've been very successful so far. Uh, Mayor Hernandez, I want to thank you again for giving us our beautiful office because we love our office and the neighborhood that it's in. It's such a dynamic. I mean, our fellow organizations in this building are all wonderful partners, so. Thank you, and I will call you and email you all.
Please do, please call us.
Thank you. Any other speakers?
I don't have any speaker requests for me, if we have anyone on Zoom.
Thank you. All right, move on to council comments.
I'm going to go for it.
Yeah.
Okay. So and just some updates here, um. I went to the desert aid D A P health, it's the new branding of it, um, Health Equity Walk, um, a couple of weeks ago, and that was pretty fun. Um, they rebranded this year, so it's bought access to healthcare and different um aspects. Went to the Ramo Los Muertos on Saturday and saw a lot of faces there and. You know, a lot of um families running together and and you know, there was all the city staff that ran too, so we showed up to see staff that wanted, you know, ran together and. Ran the, and the. Ramo Los Muertos, um, went to the Palm Springs Priory this past Sunday, and that was pretty fun. I saw a lot of people from Coachella. Um, when I was driving down Indian Canyon. And then looking forward to the pancake breakfast, veteran pancake breakfast on Saturday. And no mosquito updates today, but I think because it's getting a little bit colder outside and mosquito um is going down, but there is still, you know. Uh, cases of dengue and, you know, different type of diseases out there, so make sure you protect yourself from mosquitoes. Um, those are my updates um for this.
Thank you, council member Ethan.
Uh. We had our state of the city. It was really great, uh, really good turnout too, um. I think the last couple of years, it just kind of grows and grows and so this uh. This last week that we, you know, we had our, our, our state of the city for the year was amazing, really nice um to see so many people out there and. The energy too, it was very interesting. There was a lot of like excitement. Um, I saw a lot of networking, a lot of people talking, having good conversations, so that was, that was really nice to see. On Saturday, I went to Ramo Los Muertos, I ran the fa- the five K, it was fun. Um, I always regret it when I'm already running and think, why did I sign up to to do the run? But nonetheless, it was fun. It was a, it was a good time, um. Lots of people too, and it was really nice to see a lot of, you know, a lot of folks out there having a good time. Um, yesterday I went with staff, our city manager, uh, city engineer and a few other folks. To our biannual meeting with Augustine, um, the tribe. And so what we do is we sit with them, we talk to them about some of the updates that we have. Um, we let them know about different projects that we have within the city, housing, economic development. Um, all of that stuff, and then we also talk to them if, you know, they want to or interested in partnering with us on any projects that, you know, might. Um, pertain to them, so it's always really good to foster that relationship with them and. Um, they had some questions on a couple of items and so, um, I know our city manager and um. Our development services director, we're going to draft up maybe some recap points for them and. Share with them and that way we can go to our next meeting and provide them an update and just kind of follow up. So that was really good. And then same as council member Figueroa, looking forward to uh Veterans Day, so we're going to do the Veterans Pancake Breakfast, so. Should be a good time. And then I think we have synergy music and arts festival that day as well, so. We'll also show up for for some time and see how that goes, but those are all my comments.
So remember Delgado?
Um, I attended the SCAG update on Connect Southern California Transportation Plan. Um, there is a lot um to it. It's a draft, and so I do recommend that everybody go into SCAG and and, you know, be able to look at that draft. It does include the six counties, um, it's a visioned up until two thousand fifty. Um, it's set to create over two hundred and seventy five thousand jobs. And it's designed around four categories, environment, mobility, economy, communities. There's a lot there. It's very heavy, so. Um, I think it's something that affects us all, so I do encourage everyone to go into the SCAG. Um, website and the plan is on the first page and just take a look at it. Um. I did attend the state of the city, um, I have been now, this is my third one, but I have attended in the previous years as well. Um, I think this was our smoothest state of the city that we've had. Um, it was effective, it was done quickly. Um, the, the videos that all the um council members did was really well done. Um, I think everybody hit on different topics and so I thought it was just done really, really well, so. Um, I concur, I congratulate uh TESOC and staff as well as the chamber. Um, because of it, I wasn't a, I wasn't able to attend the. Um, I am part of the Coachella Valley Animal Campus, so I will get an update for you all in the next meeting because they don't happen monthly. Um. I do want to just stress a bit, you know, and hold ourselves responsible when it comes to Dia de los Muertos. Because I think that Raíces Corturas art installations kind of gets tied into the run. You know, a lot, and we have to remember that they've been there, I think, and and correct me, or is it about eighteen years? Twenty? Twenty years, and so I think sometimes they kind of get lost, you know, behind the scenes and they really don't get the support and. The um, the highlights that they deserve. Um, there's a lot of kids, a lot of youth, a lot of young adults that go out there and, you know, invest a lot of time, dedicate their time, you know, out in. During the day, you know, in the hot hours, so I do want to just get better at making sure that we're separating Raíces Cortura from the run. So that they equally get their highlights on our social media pages. Um, for, I did attend the Co- the Coachella Halloween Carnival. I was in full costume. Um, I judged some of the co- the costume contest and it was incredibly hard. It was the hardest thing I've ever done. Because you have about twenty kiddos from different age groups all in full costume, and then you're supposed to select one out of twenty. You know, how are you listening? And they're all dancing and they're all wanting to get your attention because they know you're a judge, which is the worst. And so, you know, it was incredibly difficult, but it was a lot of fun. Um, I did get sponsored and will be attending the Naleo Policy Institute of Health. Creating pathways toward Latino well-being in Newport Beach next week, which is fully funded by Naleo, so I'm. Uh, very excited about that um conference. And next, in the next two weeks, I have. The Coachella Valley Mountains Conservancy, the homelessness committee, as well as the Sunline Transit Agency meetings. Uh, all within the next two weeks, so I will be providing you guys updates on all those three. As well, and like my colleagues, I'm uh looking forward to the Veterans Pancake. I'm looking forward to um. Uh, giving uh Suzita Toro the, the um praise that she deserves and supporting all of our veterans there. And that's it for me. Thank you.
Mayor Proton?
Uh, you know, this October was extremely fun, you know, you all mentioned a lot of the great events, and so I want to applaud staff. Uh, for, you know, everything that happened from October, you know, uh in October and you, you know, or even early November. I agree, you know, out of all these states and cities that I've attended in Coachella. Um, and even, you know, like I, I, I get to attend a lot of state and cities across the county for work. And this one was one of the most uh. Uh, it, you know, one of the most uh unique ones that I've attended to where. People could come to Coachella and say, you know, we eat authentic Mexican food and. Uh, you know, like the, you know, staff did a great job in selecting the tables and just the whole like picture of it. Um, and just presentation, I think in general, and it didn't feel like, it didn't feel long, you know, it also didn't feel short. Um, so applaud everyone that was involved. Um, you know, our partners in DRD for, and I'm the champ for that event, but DRD for a lot of Halloween events that. Councilman Delgado mentioned. I took my daughters to the Big Domo Park event. They had an amazing time. Um, I went to other cities that you're, he also worked with, uh, they wanted to dress up every day, so. But I think this one, you know, the evening was a great one. Um. So it it it's been. Been a great um ongoing uh projects here with the city. I also joined uh from Zoom, the. Uh, meeting with Augustine, it was hard to hear, but uh was present for the most of the meeting. Um, and uh I look forward to upcoming events uh this weekend. And future that plot the events that we need to plan, like I see the mural with our sister city is near its end and so. Uh, I look forward to planning that with the mayor's team and May Gadi to do an unveiling of that mural. I don't think we could. Purchase a blanket big enough to unveil it, but just a ribbon, a ribbon cutting ceremony for it, uh, or something that we can celebrate it. Um, besides that, I will have any committee meetings to report. Thank you.
Awesome. Well, thank you all for participating in the state of the city and. I think this is the first year that the full council participated in the videos. As we've ensured previous years. You guys all look great on camera. Even I was looking at you guys and some of you didn't even want to see yourselves. Even I was looking at you guys and some of you didn't even wanna see yourselves. Which is always hard to see yourselves on camera, but you guys all did a good job. Um got a little bit of an announcement, uh we are having an at our CTC. Our Executive Director and Mayor is gonna be retiring in May. And uh her replacement has been named and it's Aaron Hake. And Aaron is about my age and I've known Aaron for a long, long time, kind of started our careers together. They went to USC together and so he is gonna be the new upcoming Director of Second Transportation Commission and I've wished him well and. I think we're, we're in good hands and uh you know, a very good relationship with Eric. And I continue our path of of all the good things that we're doing. I wanted to uh bring an item forward to the full council and I'm gonna ask that. We agendize this um at the Economic Development Committee. Uh I've asked for uh the creation of of a facade program. And one in particular that can be targeted between Avenue fifty-two. Uh to Sixth Street. And the reason I brought it up to the Economic Development Committee and I'm bringing it up to the council is because. As you see, the new. For a lack of a better uh word, skyline for the new. Uh elevations that are forming along Cesar Chavez. Uh and then the new apartments that are being constructed and doing a really good job of moving on those construct, on that construction. You're gonna start seeing a lot of your eye when you're driving, start going into La Rancho Grande. Start going into uh the moblerias there, the, that whole corridor that looks pretty tired. And old and it is pretty tired and old, but uh there is the building. It used to be the keg or next to the keg, the all of its uh uh, you know, AC awnings. Have basically flown off and I don't know, they're in the parking lot now, but all the AC. Uh equipment is exposed and it just looks very just tired and and it draws your attention. And so we would be, I think, a beneficiary of. Uh as a city to to really start drawing attention to that corridor. And maybe starting off with like a five hundred thousand dollar facade program. To really get those buildings into shape and then and then help us develop uh out into the remaining areas. Uh I think that little corridor, corridor, it's somewhat of a nicer. So I'm gonna bring that up and pass council. A supportive item and I think it all, it could also play very, very well with. All of the other efforts that we're planning when it comes to workforce development and economic development. I will say that on Tuesday, uh the vendors or the restaurants that came to our meeting. Uh also had another meeting uh uh where they're organizing and they're talking. Uh about how the city ordinance should formulate when it comes to the taco vendors, so. I only bring that up because they are not, they're not gonna stop and I think it's gonna be important that the staff reach out to them. And that we continue to just uh have a good uh. Uh listening session with them and and get their feedback as to how we craft this ordinance. And I know the Planning Commission has taken it up as well, that they started that conversation. Uh so I think that's gonna be very, very important, that we just continue to follow through on. And and meet with business, the the that that sector uh in in terms of how we're drafting our ordinance. Um again, the big kudos to everybody, you know, the state of the city, the pancake breakfast from Roma Los Muertos, I know this is a uh. It's a time of the of the year where where there's a lot of overtime. And there's a lot of requirements uh from city staff, but just wanted to thank everybody uh for making that time. And uh and volunteering to get overtime, you know, to participate in. And all of uh the activities that we do in the city. Uh the community uh uh very pleased, I think they they uh the feedback we've been getting from a lot of the different events has been very positive. People really enjoy it. Uh but at the same time, I I do see some feedback coming from our our uh. Uh our residents when it comes to the conditions of our streets. And I know Andrew, you know, today, uh I believe that the mundo might have called you, not think I spoke to them as well. As we did issue a press uh release on our new pavement management system. And how that's gonna work, we should be seeing a a story either today or tomorrow, but. I think the next phase or the next part of questioning from our residents is now we got the technology. That shows the streets you're gonna be paving for the next year, so I think that's gonna be important. I wanna draw attention to that forward because. Putting dollars on the streets and paving our streets is gonna be very, very important. And just a a kudos to staff as well and. Uh working out that agreement with DR order to expand the lanes and that is under construction right now. That's making a difference uh from Calhoun to Vandemarre, so just wanted to thank you guys there. Uh with that, Mr. City Manager, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, uh just reminder that street vendor ordinance will be heard by the planning commission on November fifteenth. Uh let's see, different to the table for the twenty fifth annual peace officer, public safety luncheon, held next Wednesday, November fifteenth at eleven AM at. Our Palenta Casino and Tra Mirage. Thank you, Lieutenant Vasquez for inviting us. Uh and then as as the council mentioned, the breakfast, veterans breakfast at nine o'clock at Veterans Park and Synergy Music Art Festival, eleven AM at the Aiden Park.
Thank you, without your turn.